Then I can.
On which meeting?
Start the meeting.
Okay.
Do you know how, do you know how I turn on the camera? I guess.
Well, if it's, well, it depends if it's hooked in properly. There's a, there's a, there's a video thing at the bottom of either being on the bottom line.
At the bottom of the Zoom window, it says, start or stop video in the bottom left. You have to hit that to get anything. That's assuming the camera is installed correctly, of course.
Seems to be installed correctly. It's just I've got to make, I see, I see start video just said.
Yeah.
Well, okay, here we go. Choose virtual back and video settings just wants me to choose something. Oh, start my video.
Something, something's happening. Oh, wait, it looked like it was happening and then it stopped.
Well, then stopped again.
Well, I would prefer not to spend too much time on that aspect of our meeting.
We can go, keep going, let me know if it starts.
Okay, we'll do that. Thanks. Uh, let me see if I kept a copy of the agenda open. I probably didn't. Agenda for today. Okay, so I think I did call the meeting to order at six oh two or so. Uh, our first order of business would be approval of the minutes. I got no feedback from any of the members to the minutes I sent out. I thought I said I'm out a long time ago, but when I went and looked for them, I couldn't find them. So I sent them out again a few days ago.
I think I forgot because you, you kind of dissed your own work by saying how sparse it was. So here it is, you know, and I went, yeah, it's sparse. It's okay, but I guess I didn't bother to tell you.
Okay.
But accurate, sparse, but accurate.
Okay, well, that's good. Now, you, you probably didn't see it, Ali, if I didn't get it. Oh, you're on, you're on mute.
You're on mute, Allison.
Sorry, everybody's eating dinner, so I keep eating myself. Um, yeah, Rick forwarded it to me. Again, I agree, kind of sparse, but seemed accurate.
Any comments on the minute, Judson?
Uh, no comments.
Okay, well, uh, do we consider them acceptable enough? I will consider them, and then it sounds like sparse slash okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
So.
Is that sparse comma, okay, or a slash, okay? Have to be careful with these things.
That's right. Well, the next thing on the agenda is a public comment section. We only have one member of the public on the call right now. It doesn't have to say anything, but if you had issues he wanted, that Martin wanted to bring up, he could bring them up.
Martin, you're, you're muted. Oh, there you go.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'm unmuted now. So I, I mean, the one thing I did, and I'm mostly just listening to what, what y'all are talking about. You know, just trying to get up to speed on things. I'm fairly new in town, as I've said, and, and I know Judson and, um, but I think I'm new to the rest of you because I've just moved here, uh, back in October, closed on the house here. Uh, you know, I, I'm kind of wondering, um, you, what's, what we're doing about. I, you may have seen, some of you may have seen my posts on Nextdoor, like concerned about getting a ferry service started here. I know Judson's probably in a different camp than I am on that one. But, um, what do you all think about that? And are you liaising with, um, I think it's Mark Robbins on that? What, what do you all think about that idea? And.
Well, it seems, it seems to be, it seems to be happening because we just had news today that it's starting next Tuesday, once a week, nine thirty in the morning to go to Blaine and four o'clock in the afternoon to come back.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's a, you may not be, you know about, well, you know about this meeting. So there's, there's, there are two local, uh, social media, uh, information services, really pause, pause interface. And, um, so. And, uh, someone needs to be muted there. So anyway, there, yeah, there were notes on, at least on pause, I saw a notice that was coming out. It was from the Bellingham Herald, the newspaper, uh, that apparently the, the free, this free service, you have to, it's free, but you have to make a reservation. It's a first come, first served, um, arrangement and it's leaving, well, we don't know where it's even, I assume it's leaving from the marina. And again, leaving it, what did I say? I think it's, I forgot, I think it's nine, maybe it's nine thirty in the morning and supposed to get there at eleven and then come back at four o'clock in the afternoon and get back here at five thirty. And we met, I think it's being met by a, a Watcom Transit Authority bus that will take, I guess, everybody who wants to get on that bus to, um, to the Cordada Transfer Station in, uh, Bellingham, which is very convenient if you're trying to go to the food co-op and not necessarily very co-op, very convenient for anything else. But then you have access to whatever other buses are coming through that central hub, bus hub in Bellingham. Uh, anyway, that, that was the news. It was just, just coming out today, but again, it's just once a week and, um, well, it's, you know, we'll see what happens.
That, that's great. I had not heard that and I'll go check that out.
Okay, now I, I guess, well, on that topic, although we could, we could talk about it, I suppose, on our new business. I had an email from, um, that's weird, why would that slip out of my mind? Arthur, Arthur Eber, uh, was saying that was, was reminding me and a couple of other people that years, some years ago, when he wanted to get the tax benefit district funds used to put in a, uh, pier, I guess at the end of Gulf Road, part of the, part of the, uh, the response from the county or the state was that this was not, a pier is not transportation. Uh, so the idea, the idea that it sort of extends Gulf Road, I mean, anyway, a pier is not transportation. But at the time, I think they said, if you had a ferry, if you had a ferry service, you know, a ferry, a ferry docking, uh, pier or against more of a dock would, would be. So anyway, Arthur was intrigued by that as if, if we could actually end up with ferry service and use that as a means to justify getting a dock, which I happen to support, but I'm not sure who, who are, who all in town finds that a good idea. Anyway, it would be something to think about and maybe to try to move on, but I don't know. Of course, this, this ferry is going to disappear as soon as COVID disappears someday, I suppose. So it may be too temporary for the, for anyone to approve, uh, a dock on, on that assumption. Now you're going, yeah, anyway, any, okay, everyone's fine with that. Okay, um, well, thank you, Martin. Well.
Thank you.
I think what's, what did I, what did I put into our? I gotta keep the, not that document, this document. Okay. Okay, well, the next item I put on the agenda was a selection of a recording secretary. Everyone has rejected the idea of volunteering for it. And I recall back to a mere year and a half ago, when I had, uh, the Secretary Udi's thrust upon me. I didn't actually volunteer myself, which I was, I think, forgetting about at our earlier meetings. Uh, what I was going to suggest, but, but now Rick has been replaced by, I guess we should actually touch on that, Allison. You want to say a word about your presence?
Um, I did send the email out. Uh, Rick, unfortunately, due to some personal family issues, has had to step down from the Voters Association and the PRCAC boards. Um, I was elected as our alternate, um, when we did our elections at the beginning of this year. So at least we did have, you know, something in place in case, you know, something like this happened. Hopefully Rick will be able to still be able to participate in the future, you know, and being able to attend and put in his, you know, input, but right now he needs to take care of his family.
Understood. Okay, so welcome, welcome on board in an official capacity, instead of just being a very knowledgeable vocal member of the audience. Okay, so anyway, what I was gonna, what I was gonna propose at this meeting, possibly over Rick's objection, but he's not here, so we don't worry about that, and it won't happen, was that I was gonna suggest that we have a motion to make him the secretary and maybe have Pam, Pam Shepard as the alternate for those times when he, when he anticipated he might not be able to be here. Anyway, he's not there.
I'm back.
I would suggest we could possibly make a motion to, to, to thrust this duty on Pam, even though she's not here to defend herself. She did email, I'm not sure if she emailed everybody, she emailed me. She emailed me to say she wouldn't be able to make it today. Um, so maybe again, it's not fair to do that to her, but I would like to get this item of business taken care of either with any, with anyone here. I'm sorry to, don't want to get you seasick on this. I'm gonna close a window to, hey, Parker. Yeah, you stay out there. Okay. Forever recorded, forever recorded in the animals of the, of the PRCAC meeting videos. Anyway, I would like to get the secretary business taken care of, so somebody else could be working on the minutes instead of me, while I'm also being the chair. So if there are still no volunteers, I would suggest we, we just appoint somebody by motion. And, uh, if it passes, go with it. If it doesn't, find somebody else and try that vote. Any, any comment from the, the three out of four other members that are here?
What do they do?
What does the secretary do?
Yeah, the recording secretary.
Just to, just take them, just take notes or either take notes during the meeting is what I always did. Because, and actually, I think it was necessary for the in-person meetings, but even, even though we had videos, they weren't very easy to hear, in my opinion. Now it's actually pretty easy to hear a Zoom video recording. Uh, so rather than take notes, one could just, could just have the tedious step of re-listening to the meeting and, and, and putting together, putting together minutes. I, I think my minutes were probably from last year and earlier this year, were probably a little bit too extensive. I don't know, I'm not sure what the other members thought. And I'd say, I thought the one I just did for the last month was probably a little on the skimpy side. So somewhere in between, you know, we're not aiming for a transcript of the meeting, but you want to, you want to capture for the minutes.
You certainly want to capture the votes.
You want to capture the votes, but also some, some, I, I think in general, some aspect of the discussion. So you know why, you know, why, why things came out the way they did. But, but, uh, but really I would say I would leave it up to the secretary to, unless we all read the first batch of minutes and thought they were, you know, really not on, not going in the right direction or something. But basically, I would leave it up to the secretary to, to capture the important things that happened at the meeting. For, you know, for each topic that was on our agenda. And as, as Steve says, of course, you have to, if there are motions to capture the motion and the vote on the motion, I guess, who, who made the motion, who seconded it, and then what the vote was, that type of thing. If you, if you've read any of our minutes, that would be it. So I mean, if you're, if you're thinking about volunteering, Judson, I don't know if you are, um, I would, I would encourage it. I'd say that's fine. Or, and you can certainly try it if you wanted to, and then we could see if you, if you don't think it worked or unlikely. We don't think it worked, but anyway, uh, you know, we could, we could change, make a change again if we needed to.
Well, I'm just still baby stepping here, just trying to get the video going. I'd love, I'd love to do it, but I just don't want to not do it well.
Well, okay, well, I mean, as I say, these are these minutes, these minutes, and these, these Zoom meetings are being recorded. So it's, it's not, it's, it's more of a hassle when you're trying to take notes and participate in the meeting. That's a hard thing to do. Uh, it was hard for me. I think it was hard for Linda, who was the secretary before me. Uh, but if you can mostly rely on, or intend to rely on the recording, which will only be a problem if I screw up something to do with the recording. Then it's really not too important during the meeting. And then afterwards, you can, as you listen through it, you know, you can just, you can make whatever comments about each section, each topic.
I'll try, I'll try it for one month and, um, if, if I don't do well, I'll contact you before the end of the month.
Okay, well, and what I would also, this is of course, I guess, up to the secretary, but I would encourage whoever the secretary is, I tried to do it myself, although again, I didn't do that very well last month. I try to do the minutes as early as, as soon after the meeting as possible for the benefit of everyone who reads the draft minutes to have some idea of what it was they said. While it's still relatively fresh and they can review the minutes and, uh, without themselves having to go back into the recording to see what really happened. So, but yeah, go ahead and give it a try. And, uh, if you don't like it or we don't like it, we'll figure out something next month.
Yeah, so we'll speak to you in about a week. Hopefully I'll have them done and at least we'll go from there so we can have a plan B if I can't do it to satisfaction.
That sounds great, Judson, I really appreciate it.
Yeah, I would suggest, Judson, you go find the, uh, the website at the county. Um, Allison probably knows the, the URL for that, but anyway, go find it and look at some of the minutes for PRCAC, especially the more recent ones, which are closer than, than his voluminous, multi, multi meeting that we did last year. But, um, it'll give you an idea of the max and minimal, you know, um, and so we could, I can help you with that a little bit.
Yeah, I'd appreciate it if you just oriented me once and then got me going. And then I would do what I do and get back to Steve with plenty of time to correct it.
Oh, yeah, in fact, you can get back to all of us because we'll, we'll all have, if you just, once you have something, you can show it to all of us and we can make any comments we, we have.
Okay.
All right, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Judson, I appreciate that. Oh, actually, on that, on the lines of sort of the more administrative matters, it, it would be my preference if members would actually respond to emails that come out about PRCAC stuff. I mean, obviously not if it's just some, I don't know what, you just something that doesn't obviously call for any response. But like when you get the draft, when we all get your draft minutes, I hope we will all respond fairly quickly with any comments. Um, and, uh, and like, and I think I, I think I did around two weeks ago, sent out a uh, email suggesting that maybe we should have a, a special meeting to talk about, um, twenty seventy-two stuff, mostly to try to put to bed the issue that Rick had been raising so that we wouldn't hold up our response to the county. But I think I got absolutely no response to that email and I really would prefer that we, people weigh in, even if it's just a quick, no, that's a stupid idea. So that we know, so at least I know whether we're, whether anybody read the email and has an opinion whether we should be trying to schedule a special meeting for something, if that's the topic. Anyway, just please respond to meetings, emails from, from any one of us to, that have to do with possible action items from the group that need to be addressed. Okay, stop beating that horse. Let me go back to my agenda. Okay. Okay, yeah, next was gonna be twenty seventy-two to hopefully finalize. Steve can actually remind me where things stand now, but we, maybe we did in the end not hold back on sending those final comments to the county's comments to twenty seventy-two.
Well, we, we, um, we didn't get any, uh, real comments except for our recent discussion about, uh, Rick and the, um, voters, uh, discussion about the prohibition of the automotive, AKA Dennis and all that. So, so really I think it's to bed for twenty nineteen, except for that issue. And, and Alice and I, Alice has put some good feedback on that and we got a good, good response from Cliff Strong about that. And I would propose that that issue be on our next agenda for revision, which I think should include, and from getting this, a lot from Allison, I think, is that really, um, there's got to be a uniformity in our subarea plan, uh, that relates to our zoning and also the comp plan. Evidently that the obstacle has to relate to the comp plan. So I think we have to get serious, like I was proposing vision, yada, 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 and come up with some of these ideas and then, and then bring that back to zoning. And, um, for example, uh, I, for one, think that, that making, uh, instead of prohibited, uh, if, if we don't believe Cliff, or whether, whether we do or not believe Cliff, that we can't change that until we change the subarea plan. I think that if eventually we change it to conditional, um, we have to come up with conditions. I think that's an extremely simple way to think about it is, it's not easy to do because it takes consensus and we know what that's like, right? But we can have discussion, start some vision, et cetera, et cetera. And we can, uh, come up with, uh, for different kinds of businesses, especially that one, um, come up with conditions. Uh, off the top of my head, if, if there was going to be a repair business, a new repair business, I would like the, um, uh, storage of the worked upon vehicles to not necessarily be visible. And that would be impossible at Dennis's. He can't even drive into the back at Dennis's, but on another site, that might be possible. So for, that's just one example, I'm not pushing that. Um, but, uh, there's probably a bunch of other things where we would be interested in, in having, uh, a condition for mechanics, but, but also disallowing things like used car lots, you know, or things that might be really unsafe.
I don't, yeah, we don't, I don't think we have to revisit the whole issue here, but you, yeah. I think the point is.
Bring up the base.
The point is, and, and I, and what I was actually trying to make to Rick last month was, this can be part of, this can come up again, as, as everything can, if we get into a more, you know, a more substantial review of all these, uh, requirements in twenty seventeen. I mean, what the, the feedback, you know, that we got from the, from at least from, from Sat Paul, from the county executive, was that these changes were sort of minimal nibbling around the edges and that's fine, go ahead and do it. But keep in mind that maybe you want to do a much more comprehensive, uh, review, which would all, as we, as you've always said, Steve, anyway, you know, would start with vision and, and looking at the big picture, working our way down to the detail of that, of the zoning, actual zoning requirements and things. So, yeah, I think that's fine, but I think the, the point of, from, the point I'd like to come out of this meeting with is that we have finally wrapped up, so at least until we get additional round of feedback from the county, the work we did last year, that we had those comments from PDS, from the, that then got sort of hung up by the, by the COVID, you know, restrictions and things, but we had those comments from PDS. Last month, we went through each of their comments and made comments back. And either those have already been sent to the county or they will now be sent to the county because nothing is holding us up from doing that. Is that where we stand?
Yeah, yeah, the next step is the planning commission, which does not meet until October thirtieth or something like that, October something, anyway, according to Cliff. And so we should have something to enclose hands before that. And basically, what we've already added and voted on, uh, with no controversy, except for this idea of, of can we get rid of prohibited to really allow Dennis to exist? Um, uh, which there's some pluses and minuses about that, as we were just talking, touching upon. Um, uh, we can send it in now. I can finish the, the edit, which has all been voted upon and send it off. And then, and I don't know what the planning commission, I've been in a lot of, I've been in, not a lot, but a bunch of planning commission meetings. And I don't know exactly how they're going to handle us or if it's closed door, open door. I don't really know what happens. We should ask Cliff, you know, should any of us go there? Or are we just kind of, you know, send it off and see what happens, comes back from the ether?
Probably all by Zoom, it's probably all by Zoom these days anyway, so we can probably all go there without even having to go there. But if, if it's available, uh, you might know that, Allison, are those, are those discussions likely to be?
Yeah, they're doing them via Zoom meeting. I was listening to a planning commission one on Cherry Point the other night.
Okay, yeah.
So I guess it's just that they're so busy, uh, that what Cliff is saying is that they can't schedule working on our twenty seventy-two until October something. I guess that's what he's saying.
Okay, well, as long as.
Right now, they're doing Cherry Point.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
They aren't issuing citations at fourteen eighty Gulf Road, you know, to Lauren or to the folks there. It doesn't really matter to me when they get around to.
Well, the original agreement was that they will hold it in advance as long as we're making progress. And Cliff Strong knows where we're at, and then we had the pandemic and we've even made progress during this. So, um, I'm sure he would recommend that. I really doubt that Susan Bozeman wants to jump in at all on this, you know, given their agreement. So, um, and I think I asked Cliff that specifically, but I, I don't want to go on record saying exactly what he said. But, um, that's what it, the feeling I got from the conversation, indeed, you're just letting it roll. And then, you know, if, as long as we quote unquote, keep working, which is getting something eventually to this planning commission, then we're okay. And then we go from there. There they go from there.
May I?
Judson, who's talking?
Uh, the chamber did discuss the, uh, the issue of the auto, um, repair shop and, and voted to have it remain the same for now.
Okay, thank you, Judson. Okay, well, I would say, I mean, the, Allison is sort of, you know, sitting in, well, sitting in, not in for him, but sitting in place of him, um, really, I mean, if, unless, unless the voters are, are still insisting on trying to revisit that one particular issue, which I strongly object to, without the entire thing getting put up, back up into the air, um, I would say we are done with all that. We, we pass on these comments that we all voted on last week, last month, rather, to the county. And unless they come back with some other comments, they want us to consider that for the time being, until the planning commission comes back with whatever comments they may have, that we would be done for the moment with the two thousand nineteen review, Allison.
We have a bit of an issue in the fact of, in the original twenty seventy-two, the prohibition existed on Gulf Road alone.
Yes, that's true.
In the changes that has been done on twenty seventy-two, it has now become all-inclusive of all small town commercial.
Yep.
Twenty seventy-two is not allowed to go against the subarea plan. The subarea plan takes precedence over twenty seventy-two. Twenty seventy-two is supposed to fall in line with the subarea plan.
Right.
And there is a specific line item in the subarea plan, which calls for the automotive type businesses to be in small town commercial on Taiyi between Benson and Gulf.
Okay, are you?
We have a problem to say that a use that is called out in the subarea plan to be in a certain area, to say that you can't do that in that area.
Okay, also, are you aware of what was in your email from a few hours ago? Yeah, I mean, based on the limited language that was in your email, I would disagree with your interpretation of that. Although generally, of course, your interpretations are much better than mine because you know this stuff backwards and forwards. But it, but it very much looked from the language that was in that email, that automotive oriented didn't mean the businesses were automotive oriented, like, like a car repair shop, a car dealership, a car storage place.
This email, that's what he calls it.
No, no, yeah, the oriented is fine, but it, it, the oriented language is fine, but it was more a question of, of the Gulf Road part, being intended to be this beautiful little place with nice storefronts that people would be walking up and down. And that was, that is so-called pedestrian oriented, whereas the other part of the small town commercial was not going to be so pretty. And it's the kind of thing, you hop in your car and you drive to the, you drive to the grocery store, you drive to the gas station, you drive to, yeah, there could have been, there could have, I know the old rule, it is still rule, but the one we were trying to change, there could have been theoretically a, a car repair place there, you would drive to that, of course. But it doesn't mean that you have to put a car repair place there just because you could, or an automotive orient, it doesn't mean you need to have automotive type businesses there. It means it's the kind of things you go to that aren't so pedestrian friendly as the, the beautiful shops that are supposed to exist on Gulf Road, which of course don't, but, uh, I would not. I would not go to the point of saying that it meant that there needs to be that type of business. It just means whatever kind of business it was, even if it was a junkyard or a, or a, I don't know what, just another hardware store, it's the kind of thing that you drive to, it's not the kind of thing that you stroll along with your family, uh, to look at and go into. Anyway, but I, but regardless of, regardless of, well, if there's an actual problem, then I would look to the, at this point, I'd look to the county to tell us that there's, that there's a disconnect and we can always see, or you, you could either individually or for the voters or individually, or we could all do it as a group, you know, ask that question to them again, along the lines of your email. Is there a disconnect between what we've just done on this one point or not? But I would still say that with respect to what we put to the county, and then they came back with about whatever it was, ten or twelve, uh, things they wanted to change, little bits here and there. And we got, and we, we addressed each one of those last time with our comments approving many of them and having larger, small objections to a few, that we consider that to be done and back to the county. We can certainly highlight this point again to them so that they, so that they don't miss it if it actually is a point that should be, uh, addressed. We could put that back to Cliff to say, you know, what about this, is there, is there a disconnect between the existing subarea plan and our change by expanding the, the prohibition out commercial?
Yeah.
Prohibitions that used to be only on Gulf, expanding those to Gulf and Taiyi. We could highlight that in case, in case he overlooked it.
Yeah.
That would be.
I would like to, I don't know if we need a motion, but I'd like to propose that, um, Allison write up her top so many questions and, um, anybody else who wants to. One question, all right.
Well.
You only get one question.
She can do whatever she wants.
Press costs fifty bucks each.
I would propose the topic, unless, I mean, if there, if there are other things, they should come back before us. If there's an, but, but this one seems like an issue.
Okay. But yeah, there, there is obviously a, a, not a loophole, but an imperfection there. And, and I was looking through some of Cliff's other emails and he brought up several other areas um, that, that go way back, back to twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. I saw in some emails where he said there was other sort of conflicts that we fixed some of, but maybe not all. And, and this is where they come back and not even just Sat Paul, this is where Cliff says it all the time, and I kind of parroted back to him, that we need to work on the whole enchilada, you know, we're, we're, what do we want for all Point Roberts? And this is hard and we haven't really started on it. And this is what those guys want, because then they can help us write code that really fulfills that. Because obviously, um, when you look at the authors of the subarea plan, they were thinking about this beautiful zone and all that kind of stuff, which was mainly going to be Gulf. And then we did this thing about expanding it to, to, to parts of Taiyi. But, um, uh, they, they didn't want some dirty place, I guess, even though Dennis's was already there. Whatever, why they didn't want it, I, it's unknown to me. But anyway, they didn't want it, so they prohibited it. And, um, and, and they, they didn't prohibit it specifically in the subarea plan. They, both what Cliff has said and, and some of what Allison said too, is, is that it's, it's a little bit gray. I mean, um, Cliff is following interpretation. Of course, he's the, the, the current working, um, person that's supposed to interpret things like subarea plan. Person that's supposed to interpret things like sub area plan and the code. And so we don't really know what that means. Doesn't mean that that we can never change anything without changing sub area plan. He seems to think that that interpretation is strong enough. To put doubt into it and that's where you get into lawsuits and the crazy stuff that nobody wants. So I'm I'm definitely all for moving on, but not forgetting, you know, embrace.
He's going to forget anything.
Yeah.
But I would reiterate the point we I was just making before that we wrap this up, we add a comment that either either one of us. Another one of us writes or that Allison writes that she's willing to. Something that would accompany what you're going to send back to Cliff that says, okay, here's all of our comments. To your comments, here's all of our comments to the county's comments. And we have this one additional point that was raised by Allison, but doesn't really matter at this point, it's it's a question from all of us.
Very good.
You know, does does this change that we made to include that expands the. Prohibitions of on Gulf Road to apply to Taiyi as well to the small town commercial area of Taiyi? Does that run of in any way conflict with the sub area plan? And and we can take or not take his responses as the truth, but we can at least hear what he has to say, we can make sure we've alerted him. So he's not caught off guard himself later or something, but it'll be there and and as we've been saying quite a while. Even through the original process last year, we can do, we can revisit all these types of things if we ever get around to doing a more comprehensive. Review, which which really needs to start with things like economic development plan and vision and whatnot, before you get down to the nitty gritty. Of tweaking these things that we probably shouldn't have messed with in the first place without that kind of input, but anyway. Do we do we agree that we would? Wrap up the 2019 work with this. Response to Cliff with the with the little bit of addition from Allison.
Yeah, if it's a vote, I vote, yeah.
Okay.
You want to take a vote?
Yeah, okay, let's that we could have a motion to to send the pre last month's comments with our with our comments and votes on the county's proposals supplemented by a.
Clarifying question.
Clarifying question about suburb, the interaction of the sub area plan. And the change we made on Taiyi in the in the small town commercial zone.
Very good.
Yeah, that that's the motion, do we agree to that? And second that motion?
All right.
Did we did we get a second to my motion?
Yeah, we did.
Okay, and I'm yeah, I'm I'm in favor as well, so I don't know what.
More a zero.
Okay, I couldn't tell, so we can't see Johnson's hand.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Johnson. Okay, let's let's do that, I'm sure it isn't the end of 2072, but it could be the end for tonight. 2072, Martin is just the the number of the Watkins County code that has to do with zoning and special zoning rules for Point Roberts.
So Allison.
Many people talking about it.
Yeah.
Allison, when will you send me that question?
I'll do it this evening.
Okay, thank you, good, that's good timing, we're good, I put it to bed.
The next thing I put on the agenda was just so I didn't forget it was follow on to. Beth Chisholm's Zoom visit with us last month where she talked about what she could offer in the way of the. You know, sort of zoning, recycling and composting and possibly trash reduction. Sort of seminars that she could possibly even still do online. She did eventually get back to us, but but I was expecting her to get back to us with a. Proposal, she sort of more got back to us with a maybe just a question to reconfirm, this is what we, the areas we were looking for, I think, as I remember it. And I don't think we've heard really heard back from her yet, so the joy, I'm sure we'll just we'll follow up on this again. At a subsequent meeting, if she get after she gets back to us or maybe our Allison arrival, remember to. Remind her to see if she has anything more for us before the next meeting, something like that. So I would I would leave that there. Okay, so that would, for me, that was the end of old business. Well, I mean, there is a there is a looming old business out there that we that I bring up each time, but. It just keeps being in the background, which is, you know, priorities for 2020, which I think at this point is probably just surviving the shutdown of Point Roberts at the border. And it doesn't really involve any grandiose plans on our part to really review anything. I mean, there's always the shade, the trees on the tree canopy on. On APA, if anything more ever comes out of the conservation group running on that or other projects, but I think for right now, it's hard to get. Given the fact that we have only one member of the public who even came to the meeting, I mean, there don't seem to be people that are really focusing on. On the on smaller issues other than survival of Point Roberts during this time.
Well, and the tree issue is is a bit moot for now, because our our the one, the lady Armin, who is running the the show there, trying to trying to run the show. She can't get a hold of the the man that runs Seabright.
Oh, right.
Right now, so it's just kind of like going nowhere for the moment.
Okay.
So that means that we will not have the money or the time to. Put those trees into the ground. Before the end of winter, hopefully, and fall really is where they're supposed to be planted. But that means we can do it next year, you know, so it's not dead, all the work's been done. And I think that it can eventually move forward and we just don't sweat it for the moment.
Okay, that's fine, thanks, I won't bring it up again. The other thing I do periodically bring up then also, I guess, is the issue of restructuring this organization, this this committee. And again, we don't have to talk about it today, but I guess I would. Go back to whether either anybody in the public or or the three constituent organization, you know. Put forward a plan or have some idea we can, we could discuss it at our at our organization, you know, next month or the month after. It was to my mind, it really was the one thing that that Sat Paul charged us with trying to do. This year, but of course that was before COVID, so it, you know. It could probably also flip over to next next year just as well, but I would like to think that we, at least people give some thought to. Whether we want to change it, there were topics about. Having making all the seats at large or making or adding additional at large, but keeping the representative. Stuff from the from the from the these three organizations. Or or there could be other changes, I mean, there was some talk, you know, sort of months and months ago about. Having this basically be superseded by some new organization that was essentially a combination of the voters and the taxpayers, something like that. But anyway, I'm not not trying to make an argument, just trying to say, I think I think we should not forget that that was. Something we were charged with back in February, just before the bottom fell out.
May I?
We should, yes, go ahead, Johnson.
Yeah, so the chamber discussed it, you know, I I. Brought up the, you know, the ideas of having four at large, all at large, all those things, and they came to a unanimous decision to keep it the way it is. That the the most important thing is to get what we've got working really well to remind the the various organizations. Why they exist and the good reasons they exist and 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 to follow through on their original mandates and. Basically, keep things the same and make it run really well, we can change it later.
No, that's a fine, that's a fine perspective, but we'll see if we ever get any other input from. Either members of the public or other the other organizations or me and Pam. Some point, but okay, that's good, I'm glad I'm glad you guys talked about it, I appreciate you taking that back to them or them bringing it up. Whichever whichever way it worked, that's good.
I think you're aware that Voters Association, you know, when we were having our meeting, I think you were there before this all happened. Decided that, you know, we felt that all the positions should be at large positions if we want the community to feel invested in the PRCAC. That having them have the ability to vote in the board that represents them. And knowing that they, you know, every couple of years, depending on how it works. Can vote people out if they don't feel that they're representing them appropriately. Will get the community more invested and want to come to the meetings and be active. And just because. You know, why should the Voters Association, the Taxpayers Association? Or the Chamber have an automatic seat, there's over 35 groups in Point Roberts, what makes us so special that we get a seat at the board to make decisions? It should be the community electing the board and the community therefore having an input in how the decisions are made.
Yeah, well, those are those are basically the two, I think, the two perspectives on that on that issue. And I, yeah, yeah, I know myself personally, I was, my main objection to this organization has been the. The fact that out of those 35 groups, you know, these three are the ones with seats. Although in fairness, they are the ones trying with the the greatest. Overall community focus, but not really, that's not my entire story, the conservation group is looking out for the environment of the entire. Of the entire community as well, so anyway, I think that's a good point as well, so anyway, so. We can, I don't think we're going to make any decisions here, but I just don't want us to forget that issue. I don't know, Steve, whether the. Taxpayers have revisited or or I think they were sort of on, I thought they were sort of in line with the voters, but I don't know now if that was true.
There was talk about, I think Marx and maybe a few other people's personal idea, not a vote that had a majority, but just a discussion point. That that that. He didn't want taxpayers to have to be so focused on on this one thing, because I'm the one mostly doing the focusing, but but still, I I bring it to the the meetings and we spend time on it. So he really wanted it to be something different. And and, you know, he and Arthur sort of invented the concept of the three. The history of it invented the concept of the three at large, three members and two at largest. And and they bought it and they they created the PRCAC, the county did. And so there's other ways of being and and so, right, the members could drop out and it could be all at larges, and I have concerns about doing all at largest. Because I'd like to, especially if they're all at largest, have a better definition of what an at large is supposed to do, because if you lose the community. Function of these three groups. Even if they're focused and they're different, which they always will be, you will also lose. That that implication of the the public, so I'd like to understand better on the proposal of going all at large. How we could define that, for example, I heard one at large person who's no longer at PRCAC. That person said that they they didn't want people calling that person at home. They didn't want them at all calling being called at home, they wanted to just dream up their own idea. Which is okay, one interpretation, but my point is not to beat up on that idea, but although I don't really agree with it, but just to say. I don't know if that's the right idea for at large, at largest should, you've done some public outreach, Steve, so you know. Especially if you replace the three members with at largest, we should have some rules and recipes and methodology. For how those at larges would operate, that's like my.
Yeah, that's a good point, yep, if we did go that way, we, and even if we went, even if we go to a, well, even if we stay at the two, two at large, or if we go to a majority at large. To have four at large to out be theoretically able to outweigh the the three, the three groups who oftentimes happen to be in alignment on their perspectives. Not always, but sometimes, yeah, whatever way, whatever way we go, if we're going to have any at large, we probably ought to have a definition that could be in those elusive bylaws that I never work on. So, yeah, I think it's a good idea. Okay, well, I think we, I appreciate the discussion, I'm willing to leave it there. For now, if everybody else is. And move on to the actual new business, which is that. That construction permit application for the in and out.
In and out, right, in and out on Taiyi.
Is it worth?
Does Martin know what we're talking about?
Is it worthwhile trying to put this on the screen or is that not, everybody has, so, yeah, so. One of the one of the only only set function of this organization, Martin, is that when a commercial. Or a commercial business in in Point Robert seeks a building permit or a commercial building. Those come to us as part of the county's approval process and we get to weigh in. If we think it's following the rules as we understand it. And then it goes back to the county for their final, they can factor in our comments, but they they end up making the final decision whether to grant the permit, whether to make any. Changes, whatever, but we get it, we do get this one. Bite of the apple to to make comments that if we think there's something. Something wrong, anyway, so we have one of those before us tonight. Parker.
Go pretty fast, there's a ton of detail of what they've done. You know, so and I also want to say that I. The dog ate him, finally, I've been waiting for years. Martin, you don't know how big his dog is, dog is bigger than Steven.
Yeah, dog is outside, okay, sorry for that.
We love him, he's a great dog, okay. Um, all right, so we could go pretty fast to this, because it's very difficult to read all the details. I mean, I tried to go through it all, I found this one missing piece, which is the landscaping, it's supposed to be a landscaping plan, they make a big deal about it. Now, you should know that what the the in and out, like for Martin's benefit, the in and out is is one of the. Parcel services that's right on the Taiyi road as you go one block or so south from the border, it's on the right as you're coming south. And it's got a big sign out front, which was a controversial thing on its own, anyway, they want to expand it, but they're only going to expand it in the back. But still, we have to apply this, that it's like, it's not like the front can follow the design guidelines in the back, doesn't have to. So I guess we still have to do this, you know, from a. Legalistic point of view of our of our requirements as PRCAC, I mean. What?
May I?
Yeah, Johnson.
Do they address the fact that their sign is not compliant in the proposal, I didn't see that part?
Yeah, no, this has nothing to do with the sign, there's a there was a whole big fight about it. And I don't, I honestly don't know what, I was thinking about this because this came up. What was the final answer, it looks like the same sign they've had for a long time, which is basically, we're not allowed to have a internally illuminated sign. You know, so and that's what they did, they did it without permission. But I know, I know Nick Smith and the compliance people were all over it. But I honestly don't know what happened with that, because it looks the same to me.
I'd like to know that answer, because it proves what kind of, how do you say, community citizen they intend to be. And then the other thing is, our group hasn't had a chance to look at it in detail. And so I I I'd like, I mailed all the emailed all the information to our group. But no one responded, so we haven't had a chance to discuss it in detail.
Well, yeah, I don't know, I would I would take exception to that that approach, I mean, I don't know, I haven't been, I've only been involved in maybe two. It's been a fairly slow time, I guess, for building in the year and a half I've been on this committee. And I mean, for for one thing, we have it, we do have a 30 day time constraint, so we don't have a lot of time to be seeking other input. But I have not seen this as a matter that really. Rises to the level of. Like 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 zoning changes, you know, that kind of stuff that was that does need that feedback from the. From the supporting organization or could use it anyway, I think in this case, we just use our judgment. Looking at the plan, and Tony, I don't I don't object to anybody trying to get more input, but I think when we come to this meeting, we just need to use our judgment. And whatever information we perceived in over the time, if we have any. To to, you know, to see, but our 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 decisions are not really based on much other than. You know, does it does it meet the setback, does it have the? The roof eaves that that turns out to be an issue, does it have, you know, is it is it is it too tall, whatever, the same things the county is looking at. But we could certainly add it, I like the idea, I mean, I don't want to prejudge the outcome of our discussion, but I like the idea that we might include. Not only a comment that there didn't seem to be a landscaping. Plan, so our 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 approval, if we give it, is contingent on a on an acceptable. Landscaping plan, but also if we have an issue, if there is an issue with the signage. This will be a great opportunity to say, while they're doing that work, this will be a good time to bring their sign into conformity with. With the rules and not not just have it be either grandfathered in or ignored. Because it has been in the past, but anyway, why don't we go, why don't we look at the plan itself? Whatever we have to, or look at your checklist at least and see if we can. We can go through it to against the plan that we have.
Do you have the checklist or you want me to just read it or?
I don't have it in front of me, if you have, do you have it handy?
Yeah, of course. Let's see.
Is that okay, Johnson, you understand what I'm saying, Johnson, I want to railroad you.
Yeah, but the funny thing is, we're asked to vote. On something that can have no benefit to the community, basically. There's no discussion of local contractors, suppliers. No, I understand that, so we're asked to approve something when they when they left out what they haven't done right in the past. And they haven't got a complete application because they've missed the landscaping. No, my answer is no.
Yeah, I mean, that would be, that would be, to me, that would be a totally acceptable response, if that's how we all felt. That, but I think I think in the interest of moving forward, we could make, I think we can do. Assess what we have in front of us and make the comment that we can't give a final. Approval because we weren't provided with landscaping, which seems to be part of the plan. And as and I also like the idea of making some comment about the sign, everybody else might not, I don't know. But anyway, but I think the starting point still is to go through what they provided us, I mean, we could take your approach, Johnson, if everybody else agreed and say. Why should we look at a plan that doesn't seem to be complete, that would be, I guess, a perfectly, you know, have, send it back to the county, have them send it back to us. In a few days and then it'll be on, it'll be next month's meeting instead, which is, I wouldn't find that. Horribly objectionable, I can't imagine why somebody wants to build in addition to their shipping business right now, anyway.
Yeah, and and maybe they could, you know, I don't know, we could ask them why they're doing, what benefits it.
Well, that.
I know it's not the business of this group to require that.
I think you do.
It's kind of insane that we're approving something that's of no use to a foreign owned business that is not in compliant in the past. That is doesn't have a complete. Proposal, I don't understand, what are we approving, wrongness?
Right, well, I I guess I would say that this probably even runs afoul, I mean, I don't want to speak for the chamber, because I've never even been to a meeting, but. I would imagine the Chamber of Commerce has a rule. I would imagine the Chamber of Commerce has a rule, would probably not want that kind of approach taken to to uh uh our review of other businesses' um development plans. But I I think, I mean, I I certainly, when I read this thing, I certainly wondered why, but also this was filed like a year and a half ago, so when they filed this plan, they, you know, no one expected the the border to be shut and shipping businesses to be closed. So anyway, I think we have to put that aside. We don't get into the question of whether it's a stupid idea to put an addition on the back of a building. If the building meets the requirements of the zoning and and the building, uh the design guidelines, which are all we, all that we have access to uh consider.
So I have a proposal. Do we know if they still plan to do this because it was applied for before the COVID thing?
Allison has a comment on that?
Yes, they do.
Okay, so I have a proposal, I have a proposal. That the chamber or any of the member groups, um or any group really, I guess, but especially of the three groups or the two at largest. Can write a letter of concern separate from PRCAC um to Nick Smith um or the fellow that wrote all this. Um Nick Smith might be the right guy because of the uh code violation stuff. But um to whoever is the right person recipient, to say, we have concerns that that we've never that have never been addressed properly in Play Roberts, which includes, you know, local contractorship. Um uh you know, a variety of whatever, whatever is in your heart that is of interest to you. And so it's not something we need to vote on now, but it's something that we, that could be proposed as a question to them, because they do, and I'll I'll finish quickly, but it says in there on the uh the CUP that indeed, one can, this is way too much work for anybody to bother, but um you can bring this up again. If there are things that are wiling, my word, not the, not Bob Nick's uh hearing examiner's words, if there's things that are bothering us in Play Roberts, um we can open up the hearing again. Um and I, maybe that's the wrong way to do it. It's too heavy handed, I don't know. But I um I would love to see if you have, if the chamber especially has business related concerns like local contractorship, that they put it into the pipeline somehow, which is a different process than what we're trying to do with this thing.
Okay, Allison, then I have a comment myself.
Um as follows, uh local contractorship, that's illegal. You cannot tell someone you have to hire local or anything like that. It's just like Waukesha County can't say that we will give bids for doing work on county facilities to Waukesha County companies first. The idea is you go out and you get the best bid. It's actually considered a legal process for you to try and state that.
Yeah, I know, you know, you know, I know that. I do know that, but I I just gotta say on one level that it's kind of insane that communities are approving things legally that have no benefit to them. I know it's outside the scope of this conversation, but I had to bring it up because it's something that is bizarre. And that um that I'm gonna propose to the chamber that there's a guideline, a suggested guideline, not legal of development of developers to make sure the pro, A, that their projects are successful. I'm tired of these Gold Coast Marina Seabright disasters. And B, that there's enough benefits derived from the community to get community spirit involved, in fact, to make them successful. So I'm sorry, I know it's a separate um item. I'm sorry, I know it was. But at the same time, I think it's bizarre that these things can happen.
Well, yeah, you should take it up with the chamber. You can always bring it back to us or just, or just deal with it after chamber. They can, they can do, but it, but it really isn't part of this issue with this plan, which we need to look at. Or get, unless, unless we choose to take a vote that says, we don't wanna look at the partial plan when we don't have the landscaping piece of it. We could take that approach. I would.
And and the sign resolved?
Well, the sign, I think the sign is a, is a difference. I I I'm I mean, it's a difference, but I'm perfectly supportive if we all agree, or the majority of us agree, I'm perfectly happy to put a note in our approval or disapproval of the.
There's a line item for signs in the uh checklist. The thing is.
But it's not a part of the permit.
Right, but it's not a part of the plan. I mean, I, we can, we can put it in to say, this is, this is an excellent time for the county to help the community by change, making the owner change the sign while they're doing this massive project. But it's not, as Allison, it's not part of this plan. It's in our checklist, so it's a good place for us to stick the comment that it, you know, it's not technically addressed.
So what are we? We're supposed to be advisory, so we can advise on the law, we can advise on aesthetics, we can advise on things that are not part of the business permit, like for example, on the water uh board building, we said, can you at least shine the lights straight down, AKA night sky? And um and that seemed to be gribbled us. Doesn't mean that that Nick is gonna peel off the permit if they somehow. But if the request is an advice that we like that, and so can you try to do it? And if they can't, that's a different problem.
May I make a suggestion? Can we go through the permit? Based on what we have, make a line item where it hits signs, say, can we please have a follow up on the previous permit issue for this sign? We don't know, maybe they did finalize it and they finished it off, we don't know. But make that comment and then under the landscaping plan, say, missing, and then when you send it back, say, we've approved all of this with this notation. But we can't finalize, cause we're missing the landscaping plan. Can you please send it? Because if you just say, you know what, we're not looking at this, we do only have thirty days. You know, they could just determine after thirty days without any proper input, that they're just gonna do what they're gonna do.
Yep, that's true.
By the way, that's happened before. It's happened to a project PRCAC was supposed to pick up on and the ball got dropped. And Nick uh blah, 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 tried, tried, tried and finally said that my, I, my own rules, my state rules say, I have to approve it if you guys don't do your job. And I I had no idea about that. That would happen like two years.
I think we're, I think we're in agreement that we should look at this at least three out of four, and maybe even four, I don't know. Agreement that we should look at this plan, make our comments, pass those back to the, to PDS with these notes that Allison and and we've all been discussing. So let's do that.
That's what I meant to really.
Okay, thank you, Justin. That's great.
Okay, I would say, um, oh, you wanna see my screen? You wanna give me this screen for a second?
We can, I'll share it. I'll make it so you can.
It gonna work?
Hold on one second.
Share screen, so I should hit this button, share screen?
Uh now you can.
Share screen, uh oh desktop, I guess that's what I want, desktop, or is it one? Oh, look at all these things that they give me to try to, hold on, let me whiteboard. What iPhone summer cable, what the hell is all this stuff?
Uh we don't, we can also just.
You can just read the checklist, Steve.
Yeah, I mean, if you just read it off to us, we go, we can go down one by.
I I think we got it. Something should be happening. You are, you are screen sharing.
Yep, there it is.
Okay, okay, so now you see this wonderful old PDF fuzzy looking thing, which is the uh the thing we've not changed it from the.
Let's go through it. I wanna get this beat covered with.
Now, um uh it's since I read it, I don't, Allison, did you actually go through everything?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, very good. Excellent. Yay. Okay, cause Allison knows what she's talking about. Okay. Site plan and elevations, um I think that the drawings and the site plan elevations are in compliance. Uh that zoning is twenty five feet and they make a big deal about making sure that we know that they kept the building to twenty five feet, so I think they're in compliance for that.
They're in compliance for the setback.
Okay. Setback to. Okay, compliance check. Uh parking, um uh the design guidelines have not been uh finished. No, that does, sign guidance have been finished, ratified. So we changed it, but working is certainly mainly adding some on the side and in the back. So I assume it's in compliance. I didn't check the code.
It is in compliance with the mitigation that they did with PDS.
Okay, so we'll just take compliance. Lighting, okay, um I'd like to say it's in compliance, but we urge them to have down facing lights um that um uh follow the AKA night skies initiative. That's a, uh just like we did with the waterboard.
Yeah, I would support that.
Okay, for which Mr. Faber, the owner of the contracting for the uh waterboard, said he has zero problem with stuff like that, you know, suggestions like that are just absolutely fine with him. Okay. Building mass height and.
Hold on, you just, you just skipped it. We only have to make the note on landscaping, not.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, cause I already wrote it down. Can't finalize, no plan submitted to us to.
That's good.
Okay, uh building mass height and roof designs. Um I think that we're in compliance for all of that. It's a gable roof. Um they do have um uh eaves and they have um which are not required, we found out, and they have gutters and the height we already talked about. Um and building ass seems uh in compliance, so compliance?
I think so. Yes.
Okay. Materials, it's basically they use the barn wood on the outside and they use probably steel doors and the usual crap for the 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 uh the the materials, windows and doors. So I'd say they're all in compliance. They're not exactly beautiful, but then I don't know if it's a problem. So um they're basically, the materials, basically that's the siding and the trim is all gonna be wood of some kind. So compliance for materials?
Yeah, I think so.
Yes, it matches the existing building.
Right, which sucks, but okay. Yeah, I wish, I wish we were our evil twin and we could force them to spend money on making the whole thing better looking, but that's.
That's a different world that we don't live in.
Yeah, okay, okay, uh windows. Um I can't, could tell if they said vinyl windows or or metal windows and and I mean, the style is just your vanilla style, so I guess it's in compliance.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, doors. Again, vanilla doors, pretty much in compliance.
Yep.
See vents, they don't have any porches. They have awnings. No, they don't have any awnings, but they have vents. And um I, the vents are your standard, I guess, plastic vents that they put, the roofer puts in. So um they're not as very aesthetic, but I don't think it matters. And so I would say they're in compliance.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, exterior finish and detail. Well, I didn't really see much for that, other than it's gonna be painted. Did you see anything, Allison, on that?
No, it's pretty much gonna be the standard same as the existing building where it's just the barn style plank.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so compliance. Um color, um just uh 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 follow the the name of the, let's follow the palettes, the the, not Gettysburg, what is it called? Follow, Justin, what's the name of the palettes?
Williamsburg Collective.
Williamsburg, not, yeah, not Gettysburg. Williamsburg.
Gettysburg, where you just throw blood on the outside of the building.
Yeah. And uh um I did I say earlier, my conversation with Nick Smith about the colors? He said that, yeah, that's his problem to enforce them. So what he simply did is add a condition that they should be this or come close. So it's up to him, not up to us, to see if they're in compliance, so. All right, so we'll say, uh we'll say compliance. Okay, hardware, that's door handles and stuff. I guess it's in compliance. And who the know, but this, by the way, for anyone that doesn't know it, this list is completely obsolete and ridiculous. So that's why I wish we had updated it. That's, put that in your list, Steve, for things we actually actually work on.
Okay.
Okay, uh other features on, uh forget it, not applicable. I don't even know what that means. Okay, and last one is sign location and dimensions. Um I think they did follow the twelve foot, but we're say follow up on on this sign, that is the code violation report, what happened with it. So, okay, so so that means that on signs and on landscaping, we can't approve, so that means it does not comply at this point. So is that what we're saying?
It wouldn't be a non-compliance. It would be a note to file for additional information.
Wouldn't be non-compliance, because, okay, so we're saying we can't rule on compliance or not.
For us right now, that that the the con, the owner may not be out of compliance, but PDS didn't give us the landscape, whether.
Right.
So I mean, from our point of view, though, I would say it is essentially, there's no, there's no landscaping plan, so from our limited perspective, it seems to be non-compliant for lack of plan. Plan missing would be a, a perfect, maybe a fine statement to say. I mean, seems to be missing and put it under non-compliance, I would think.
Okay, PRCAC can't approve, not using the word compliance, with without the landscaping and um.
Well, I would, I would make that two separate issues. We can't come, we can't approve without the landscaping plan, cause it's, it seems to be missing from the papers we have.
Yeah.
Separately, I would say that we are, there's, there's, there remains concern about the the.
Disposition of the sign.
The existing sign, which appeared, which is under, which locally is understood to be non-compliant, even though it's not changing in the context of this project. I'm not, not, that isn't for your note, but I mean, the the concept is, it's not actually changing, so it's not actually part of this permit application. But it does exist as a, an eyesore or a sore thumb, either way uh uh here, and this is a great opportunity for the owner to address a longstanding sign issue. Unless the, unless the county has already at some point.
Yeah, they may have, my understanding is that they have settled with him somehow. But like I said, I don't see any changes with it, so I don't really know what they did with the settlement.
I I don't know how much it costs to change a sign, but the amount they're about to spend on that building, if it was a little bit of leverage to say, why don't you fix the darn sign? We aren't gonna be able to see much of the addition anyway, but we, we don't care as much about the addition as we do about the parts we can actually see from the road.
Yeah, okay.
So why not fix the sign?
I don't think that sign is actually lit.
Yeah, it's a backlit sign.
Yeah, it is. It's internally lit.
No, I know, but I don't think I've seen it lit in forever.
Maybe that's how they settled. They just turn.
You can leave the sign, you just can't turn it on. That may have been the disposition of it.
Could have been.
Or it's just off because of the COVID.
Yeah, that's also possible. Yep.
Yeah, nobody's allowed to come through and get their, their stuff.
Okay.
Saving energy money.
Okay, so you know what, you know what you want, what you're putting, you've got everything in that, in that document?
Yeah, PRCAC can't approve without the landscaping plan and concern about the existing non-compliant sign, please clarify.
Okay.
That's it.
So I think, I think last time we were a little bit lax on this. I think we should have a, we should have a motion, I think, to, to uh I don't, I mean, it's approved, we, a motion to approve the building permit with the, with the uh prevent, with the uh, what would we call them, conditions or something set forth in the checklist?
Oh, wait, let me remind you, last time we did not approve, remember Fred's thing with the lights and stuff?
Yep.
We just could not approve it because there's no real code, no engineering um information about how to judge whether things are too brilliant or not, because some people think it's too brilliant, some people don't mind. So we had to follow the law or the the reasoning behind the law. And and so we we couldn't approve it, so I don't know what happened. Did not Nick not approve?
Yeah, let's, let's not get into that. I asked him that a few times. We need to follow up again to see whatever happened with it, but I did, last time I caught, last time I asked Nick, I did not get a definitive answer on. Or maybe there wasn't one, actually, I think, yet, but anyway, it's worth checking up on, but right, that one, we we made caveats, but this time, I what I want, what I wanna just say, we should do, whatever, whatever we're doing on this checklist, we should do it with a motion that says that we are, we are addressing uh building permit application such and such. It has that long number in the uh, in the file names, the COM something.
Yeah, yeah.
COM two thousand and eighteen.
My point is, we did, we not, did not approve that the overall plan, even though landscaping was fine, for Fred.
We don't need to, yeah, I'm not, I'm not worried about that.
What happens after that? That's what I'm making, what happens after that?
That's an interesting question, but we're in the middle of something here, Steve. We want to finish this. What I'm saying is.
Relates to this. We could say this does not comply at the moment, because you have to follow up with these two things.
Right, I just wanna, okay, so we can do that, but I wanna, I wanna just have a motion that the group can uh discuss and then approve if we agree with it, that says something. So it would be that the uh a motion that the, this uh permit application by number has been reviewed and I guess we can say the available the available uh aspects of the plan have been reviewed and approved, but there was no uh but a, but a final, final approval is not, uh grant is not uh provided, because there was no landscaping plan. And because of outstanding issues regarding the existing uh signage.
That sounds okay. You should throw that we could not, we could not um say whether it complied or not. Use the word, we couldn't say complied or not. We gave advice, but we couldn't say.
You can certainly say that, well, we had no, we can't, we have no opinion on the landscaping, because we have no landscape.
Yeah. So yeah, I I think your motion's saying we we can't approve, we can't approve this for compliance, but otherwise it's okay.
Well, you can just basically say that, based on the available documents, the permit appears to be in compliance. We cannot get full approval until we are in receipt of the landscaping plans to be able to do final approval.
That sounds very good.
Yep, that sounds good. I'd second that as a motion.
So Steve.
And what about your card?
Okay, good. Who's gonna type that up?
Well, it's in, it'll be, it's, it's in the um, it's in. Find it. Yeah, okay, we can construct, I mean, maybe Allison and I can send, send us something that captures after the fact.
Okay, yeah, all right. All right, yeah, all right. Send me a sentence on that. And I will put that in my cover letter email.
Okay.
When I send the document back to them.
Oh, actually, uh, this is a good, this is actually an important point for these types of meetings, Johnson, if you, to the extent you are being the secretary for this one and possibly for future ones. Because we, we have a timeline on this one, we do have to, and what, what they, what they end up looking to us to do is include in the minutes that we have, that we did this review and that we have this motion that said whatever it said, and we'll provide that language. And that needs to be in the minutes so that we can send a copy of the minutes to, to Nick Smith or whoever sent us this, the other guy who sent us this one. That's what they use as their evidence that we made our review and came to whatever conclusion we came to. So so where, and you, you already said you were going to try to do it pretty quickly, which is great, Justin. But in the future, if we ever have one, you know, it's, this is, it's on the rare occasions when we have these, this issue to address, one of these, uh, permits to review, that we actually have to get our minutes done even more timely than usual to not, not want to foul the 30 day uh, limit to get our input into the county. Anyway, that was just an aside. Okay, I think we've done it on that piece. And, yeah, we'll, we'll provide that, Allison and I can provide that language for them, for this thing that we, oh, did we, uh, and did we, did we all agree to that? Or did we all vote on it?
We didn't vote yet on an overall motion.
I'm in favor of that motion.
Back in.
Yep.
I vote yay.
Okay.
I, I still don't know what happened to the sign.
Yep, we're going to try to find that out through, through this process, but it's not a direct, uh, not a direct issue in this one, but we do want to, I think we should use it as a little bit of leverage, or at least find out what happened, maybe, maybe prove it all. Okay. So we, three to zero, three to one, four to zero. I'm, I'm in favor of this motion. Steve was, I think Allison was. Johnson, uh, go the way you want.
I'm not going to vote because I'm not satisfied with this sign thing or the landscaping.
You can vote against if you want. Okay.
You can vote against it.
No, I can't say that for my group. For me, I vote against it. I can't say it for the group.
Okay, well, it's not, okay, it'll be three, it'll be three to zero.
No, three, zero abstain, one abstain.
Okay.
Please write it.
That's fine. That's enough. Gives us a majority anyway to, to, to move forward. Okay. Good. Um, I think that was, unless there's any new business, I think that was, let me go back to the agenda. That was the only new business. Right, I have no other new business. Unless there's any other new, new business. I think we can adjourn this meeting. Anything else? Okay, hearing nothing. I'll make a motion to adjourn at 7:15. Okay. Okay, good. Thank you. Good to meet you, Martin.
Nice.
Good to, good to meet you all too. Thank you for having me.
Okay.
Nice to meet you, Martin.
Yeah.
Goodnight all. Bye bye.
Yeah, we'll see you around. Bye.